Thank you.
Hello, Eric. How are you?
Good. I don't think I noticed one out, but I could be wrong.
I didn't see one. Thought they were automatic, but apparently not.
Hey, Lee, how are you?
Hey, how you doing?
Steve, did you get a note on the three sets of minutes?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Maybe you left something in my box and she emailed us.
Great.
Heather, did you have a question? Your hands up.
Hey, yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, and I don't know if it matters, I don't know if people just assume that everybody's recording the meeting, since you guys are too, but I just wanted to let you know that I regularly record.
Good, thank you for telling us. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How are we doing, everybody?
Hey, how are you, Eric?
Good.
Good.
Hello, Garfield.
Hello.
It is six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's June 16, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members. In any meeting of a public body, this meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding in real-time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL 7C 3820F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video/audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by the town, by CTSB, by the Berkshire Eagle, the Berkshire Edge, and members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items of those recently anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed may in fact be discussed, other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We have, we are finally catching up on our minutes, and I'll ask the board, do we want to do these as one set, or do we have changes?
I've got two.
Okay.
So. The one thing I noticed is just A through D, I was not involved with me or Garfield.
Okay, so let's do, let's do A through D first. So do I have a motion? You're muted.
Thank you. I have a motion. I hear feedback.
Yeah. Okay, try again.
Okay. So it's A through D that Garfield and Eric were not here, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can approve the, okay. So I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, March 2nd, March 30th, April 29th.
So that would be, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And Eric and Garfield, I'll ask you, and then you can say you're going to recuse yourself, or you're going to abstain. So Garfield?
I'll abstain.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And yes, so it's three votes, yes. The next, and this is a little confusing on the agenda, we're going to do the August 23rd, September 13th, September 27th, and October 4th. We're going to pass over the other three. One of them's executive session, the August 27th, and the other two were not in our package, so we're only doing the other four tonight. So do I have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 23rd, September 13th, September 27th, October 4th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Garfield?
Hi.
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 Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Select Board's announcements, statements, Garfield?
Nothing, thank you.
Eric?
Oh, yeah, just, just one thing, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody at Berkshire Brown for putting on an incredible event this weekend at the Hussey Dome, they did the first winter market. And it was just amazing to watch it all come together. Not only was the, all the farmers' produce on display, but I felt like Kuzutonic was a little bit also. And I would say it was a great success, over 900 people in attendance throughout the four hours, and it's just really cool watching everybody come through, all the life on the streets, cars parked up and down the streets, no complaints about any parking, and just a lot of life in the downtown Kuzutonic area, so I can't wait for the next one. It was incredible, and I just wanted to say thank you again to Berkshire Brown, and thank you to the Parks and Recs for being opening, open to having an event like that. So it was great to see the community center being used.
Thanks, Eric. Ed?
Okay.
Lee?
Yes, I just like to do a shout out to the Simon's Rock Cross Lake Swimmers, who donated a bench to Lake Mansfield that is on display and for use at Lake Mansfield. This bench was given in memory of Ruth Meyer and in recognition, recognition of her efforts of her son Bill. And it's beautiful, and it's now at Lake Mansfield, so thank you, and thank you to the Great Barrington Land Conservancy, Conservancy for that shout out as well, so thank you.
Thanks, Lee. I have nothing. Town manager report.
Thanks, Steve. I just wanted to say before I get started on my updates, Eileen, Monia, I can see that you have, that you're on by Zoom, the call-in password is 618618. There was a little confusion about that, so I just wanted to clear that up for anyone who's also looking to join by phone. So I have two updates to share on the Hus tonic Water Works this evening. The Select Board met in executive session last Monday to discuss the town's next move in assisting Husatonic residents. And while I can't elaborate too much at this time, I can say that several options were discussed. One vote was taken, and another meeting will be scheduled soon to keep the conversation moving along. I also wanted to take an opportunity to remind Husatonic Water Works customers that our survey is still live on our website. It only takes about two to three minutes to complete at most, and it will really help us gather important data, such as where exactly the problems are occurring, how often, and to what extent. We have, as of this morning, about 135 responses, so we'd like to see more coming in, and please encourage your friends and neighbors to go onto our website, townofgv.org, and take a few minutes to complete that. And one last add-on, unrelated, I just wanted to mention that the holiday lights will start going up on Main Street first thing Monday morning. And that's all I have. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mark. Licenses and permits, Steve Bernhack, Heather Campbell for a driveway at 258 Monument Valley Road. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the permit for Steve Birkenhock and Heather Campbell for a driveway at 258 Monument Valley Road, Great Barrington.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Next is our tax classification hearing. Who would you like me to promote? I see Ross is on.
Ross is on, Sue is on, I'll go ahead and promote both of them.
Okay. You got Sue, I got Ross. Here we go.
Yep.
All set?
All set.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Ross Devore, and I'm the principal of session with the town of Great Barrington. Tonight, you know, we're here to conduct a tax classification hearing and determine how to best distribute the levy amongst the taxpayers for both the fire district and the town of Great Barrington. And with that, I'll just give you a brief history for those that are new. At the tax classification hearing, the select board is required to vote to implement one or a combination of four class options for distributing the tax levy. Amongst property owners, the options are open space discount, residential exemption, small commercial exemption, a single or split tax rate. The town currently has a single tax rate with no exemption or discount given to specific classes of property. A vote to grant discounts or exemptions to specific property classes would result in a higher tax rate for the non-qualifying property owners, as the tax burden is shifted away from the exempted recipients. A vote in favor of one or more options will result in a different tax rate for different property classes. Regardless of the classification options chosen, the amount of overall tax levy will not change. Historically, as part of the annual budget policy, the Select Board and Finance Committee have endorsed a single tax rate option, providing no exemption or discounts to particular property classes or groups. Voting a residential factor of one affirms a single tax rate and the proportionate sharing of the tax levy between classes of property. Voting a factor of less than one would split the tax rate, thereby shifting the burden away from residential class onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property owners. Two separate rates would be created, a lower tax rate for residential, open space, and a higher tax rate for the commercial, industrial, and personal property owners. Land enrolled in a chapter such as 61, 61A or 61B would be subject to higher tax rate, as it would be classified as commercial for taxation purposes. With that, I'll get into the fire district portion of the tax classification hearing. The total taxable value for the fire district is going to be 887,932,279. Now, that is going to be an 8.89 increase over what it was last year. Residentially, we're, the tax levy is going to be 621,791,427, and that's a 13.5% increase over the last year. Commercial was 23,799,32,960, and that's a reduction in the commercial, and that's down by 2.07%. Industrial is at 4,794,200, and that's a 4.48 increase over last year. Personal property, that's a 23,413,9692, which is a 16.77% increase over last year. And as I mentioned, if those were total, it's an 8.89 increase overall. The levy is going to be 923,499,57. The total amount to be raised in taxation over 20 is a 59.05% increase over last year. The proposed tax rate, based on the current levy, would be $1.04, and that is a 31 cent increase over last year. The average single-family home is valued at 416,136, so the average single family would see an increase of $160. It'll go for 272 to 3 to 432. And on the average commercial property of 889,655, they would see an increase of $307, which is an increase from 618 to 925. And the financial impact, again, is a proposed tax levy, which is at 923,499. So at this point, we could have a motion to adopt that estimated tax rate, or we could wait, once I get through the town's portion of this classification hearing, and do them both then.
Mark, if you want to promote the fire district, and we can let them make their motions, so it's less confusing.
If there's anyone else from the fire district on the line, just raise your hands, please.
Buddy, do you know of anyone else that should be here? Buddy, I don't tell you this often, but unmute yourself, so we can hear you.
There we go.
Yes. Is there anyone, anyone else we should be promoting?
Yes, Bill Foster's here, Ken Schumacher and Will Brinker.
They're all with you, buddy?
They're all here with me at the, at the fire district office.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
Are you looking for video?
Okay, there you go.
Here we are.
You can go ahead with your motions.
Um. We'd like to make a motion that the fire district tax rate be a dollar four for the coming year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Will Brinker. All in favor?
Hi.
All four of us are in favor?
I promoted Bob. Is that Bob Avery?
I have no idea.
There is no Bob.
There's no Bob here.
Not for years.
Bobby hasn't been here for years. Billy.
Billy took his place, okay, thank you.
Bob Hammer is the only one missing.
Will Brinker. Place.
Yeah, no, I just said Bob Hammer.
Okay, I got it. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, Ross, continue.
You gentlemen?
Thank you. Good seeing all of you.
So for the town of Great Barrington, the same exemptions apply, same background obviously applies. The town, for this year, the town will be levying 25,134,939. That is an increase in levy of 498,559 for a 2.02 increase over last year. The total taxable value for the town of Great Barrington is 1,691,449,482. And if we look at the different classes of property, from the residential class, we see in fiscal '22, that's going to be 1,349,084,781, or a 1.12 increase. And the commercial side, we're looking at 266,743, A11, and that is actually down by 1.1%. Industrial, we're 14,365,300, and that's a 2.5 increase over last year. Personal property, this year is at 61,255,590, which is a 9.1% increase over last year, for an overall increase in taxable value of 9.8%. Based on that, the proposed tax rate for fiscal '22, I'm happy to say, is actually going to go down from 1599 to approximately 1486, which is a decrease of $1.13 this year. Excess levy capacity for the town this year is 1,993,375. The maximum allowable levy was 27,128,315, which gives us excess capacity of 1,993,375. New growth, we had a good year this year. This year, we experienced 36,541,397 in growth, which translates in the current year's tax rate to 584,296 dollars in taxable value. On the residential side, part of that growth is 28,479,567 commercially, that was 1,511,100. To contribute to that, we didn't have any growth in industrial, and we saw 6,557,30 in personal property growth. When we look at the median and average single-family home values, for fiscal '22, the median value this year
for fiscal twenty-two, the median value this year was three hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred, which translates to a median tax of five thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which would mean an increase for the, for the median value. The total increase that you would see for the fiscal year is only a hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The average value came out to be four hundred and forty-six thousand four ninety-three, or an average tax of six thousand six thirty-four, or the average tax bill increased for the entire year at two hundred and thirty, thirty dollars. On the commercial side for the Town of Great Barrington, we saw the median in commercial value at four seventy-eight nine hundred, which would translate to a tax of seven thousand one sixteen, or a decrease in taxable tax of four hundred and thirty-one dollars. The average was eight thirty-one five hundred. The average tax, twelve thousand three fifty-six, and the average decrease of four ninety-seven. So the financial impact for this year for the property tax levy would be maintained at twenty-five million one thirty-four nine thirty-nine. In all things considered, considering you know how volatile the market's been in tax increases, I think to achieve that level of growth and only, only see an average change in the, in the residential value of a hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the whole year, all things considered, I think that's pretty good. And for the commercial to go down, even better. And with that, I guess if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or as we have a motion to adopt a single tax rate and a decrease to fourteen ninety-eight six.
So let's start with a motion, and then we'll go with discussion.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion for the adoption of a single tax rate of fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents per a thousand dollars of valuation for all classes of property for FY twenty-two.
Do I have a second? Ed, you're muted.
Second that for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, and now discussion.
Just two quick things. I feel like once again, we're at a, you know, we have to make this decision tonight or very soon. The recommendations came as a list of recommendations with nothing behind it. You know, why is a not a split tax rate recommended, and if we were to have a split tax rate, what would the differences be? What are the, you know, several options? It, it just seems like there are, I would like, I, I will vote yes for this motion, but I would really like to have this discussion earlier next time, early enough that if we actually, if this board did choose some of those options, we would have, could have a discussion about it. We could find out specifically the impact it would have. I get that if you lower the taxes for one class, you raise them for another, but we have no idea how much and who that would impact and how. So I would, I would like, A, a more thorough explanation for how the Board of Assessors reached the recommendations they did, and B, some more specific numbers about what that would mean.
Ed, we can ask the town manager and staff to come back, let's say, within the next sixty to ninety days.
Yeah.
To put this on the agenda. As you said, there's not a hurry, but.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I can, I can tell you that if you went to a, the maximum level shift that we can do based on a levy, there's a one point five shift.
This is the split rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so if we were to run some options tables and look at, you know, some, anywhere between a one four five and a one five oh, just as an example, if we were to go at a one four five shift, the residential tax rate would be like thirteen sixteen. And if we went to all the way up to the maximum, it'd be like twelve oh seven, which would take the commercial rate, go to twenty-two twenty-nine.
Yeah, so.
When you're in that range, you're shifting all that burden over. And normally, communities that have like twenty-five percent or more are commercial. They're communities that kind of look at that burden, and a lot of times in those communities, they're always pushing the burden to the commercial side.
Yeah, now I'm going to be very clear. I'm not suggesting we do any of these, or that I disagree with the Board of Assessors. I'm just, I'm taking it on faith, and that makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, so we won't have a long discussion tonight about this, because that's correct, that we don't have all the information. But we'll come back and have a discussion about this in the next sixty to ninety days. It'll be on the agenda. We'll have time to talk about it. And if we are interested in making a change to any of the tax rates, we'll give the assessor's office and the staff a lot of notice. Obviously, we couldn't do it today if we wanted to. That's correct.
I mean, when it comes to the shift, I mean, that's something you probably want to do, look at ahead of time. We usually wait till we get to this point of year, because that's when we finalize numbers.
Right.
You know, we have, the values are finalized, you know, we understand where a levy to, because we need that information in order to determine what shift range we can follow with them. And then, you know, we can run some action tables. You can see what those options are and determine, you know, do you want to split it, and if so, what shift range are you going to go into? So those, you know, I can certainly provide you with the information, because I have it with me. But, you know, whenever you want.
Okay. And I really, I thank you for, this is the probably best presentation of this I've seen since I've been on the board, so thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any, anyone else? Roll call, vote. Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you, Ross, Sue, staff.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you, everyone.
I've got somebody with their hands up. Hold on. Cynthia Alrick, you had your hand up? Just unmute yourself if you would like to speak. You are unmuted. I'm not, yeah, go ahead. Let's move ahead. She can raise her hand again when she gets all set. Okay. New business request to subordinate a real property lien from FY fourteen CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program. Chris, I see you promoted, so I assume this is yours.
Good everybody. Good evening, everybody. Chris Rembold. This particular item is something you've seen before under the Fiscal Year fourteen Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program. The town, along with our partner Sheffield at the time, granted housing rehab assistance grants to homeowners in both towns and placed a fifteen-year lien on the property for the amount of the grant. Sometimes when homeowners look to refinance with their bank and take advantage of lower rates, the bank requests that any other liens on the property, such as these liens, be subordinated. And we've granted these in the past. In this case, the total grant was almost thirty-three thousand dollars for this particular homeowner. And I think there's maybe eight years left on the lien, and they're seeking the board's permission to subordinate the lien. And I believe the applicants here, if you have any other questions. If not, we recommend the board vote to subordinate the lien and authorize the town manager to sign the appropriate document.
So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to subordinate the lien and authorize the town manager to sign the subordination document.
Second.
Discussion. As Chris said, this is not the first time we've done this. We've done this a few times. Roll call, vote. Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed. That was an I. Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Partnership Agreement with Bewell Berkshire for the Mass in Motion Municipal Wellness and Leadership Initiative. That's a mouthful. Someone want to give us an explanation?
Sure. Hi, this is Chris again. And I believe our partners from the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition are here. NBCC is seeking a grant from the state to fund the ongoing initiatives, the Bewell Berkshires Initiative, working with North Adams, Blamestown, Pittsfield, Lee, Lennox, Stockbridge, and Great Barrington and Sheffield as partners, as we have for the last few years. This program addresses issues related to social determinants of health, housing, employment, safety and domestic violence reduction, economic development opportunities, everything with regard to healthy and active living, healthy food, and things like that. So we're excited to support this. We do recommend that the board enter into this partnership agreement and support this work for the coming years. Hopefully, they're successful. I believe the coordinator, Morgan Abitski, is here, if you have any other questions from Bewell Berkshires.
Did you want to say anything else, Morgan?
I just, I can give like a really short explanation of kind of some of our, our past work that we've done with the Town of Great Barrington and some of our future plans.
Sure.
And so Bewell Berkshire is supported by a Mass in Motion Grant currently. Great Barrington has been included in the Mass in Motion Grant since two thousand and nine. And the mission of Bewell Berkshire is to support policy systems, environmental change strategies for equitable access to healthy food and opportunities for physical activity. So we've worked with Chris on community food planning, as well as complete streets in the past. This is our last contract year. So this would be a new RFR that the state has put out that we are applying for through the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. And some of the, the just highlights of the work that we've done. In two thousand and eighteen, we went through a community food assessment process, and that was countywide. And through that process, it was participatory. We did focus groups, we did informant interviews, and we formed a Food Access Collaborative for each region of the county. So there's a South Berkshire Food Access Collaborative that's currently still meeting. So through that community food assessment, it's multi-sector, and we highlighted priorities and goals and recommendations for the food system as a whole. And during COVID, that was kind of the network that we really called upon, the Food Access Collaborative. And we were able to really quickly mobilize food and identify the food insecure in the community and make those connections. And through that process, as we come out of COVID, we've created an addendum to the community food assessment that is around food security planning for emergencies. And we have presented that, and it's been adopted by the Southern Berkshire Community, or Southern Berkshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee. So if we are successful in this grant, we will just continue more of this work, kind of with a broader lens of including all the social determinants of health.
Hey, thank you very much. Lee, go ahead.
Thank you very much. What's the amount of the grant that you're applying for?
So we're applying for the maximum amount, which is a hundred and sixty K, but this would be between nine communities in Berkshire County.
Okay, and would that be evenly distributed, or how do you decide how you distribute?
Hundred and sixty. The, the, it's mostly salary, to be honest. There's two coordinators that would both be operating out of the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. As a project coordinator for Central and South Berkshire County, I would be subcontracted to a different organization, likely Berkshire Regional Planning.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to support this work of Mass in Motion and authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign the attached partnership agreement. Yeah, dated another.
Ed, made a second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we get to the end of the meeting, we had eight panelists and eighteen attendees tonight at the highest point. Citizen speak time. Just raise your hand. You have three minutes to speak. State your name and address. Seeing no one, Select Board time. Eric. Nothing. Garfield.
Nothing, thank you.
Ed.
Nothing.
Lee.
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Media time. And I see nothing. By unanimous consent, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.